Okay, welcome everyone to a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. I'm going to do the agenda and then I'll hand it over to Stephen for the first few minutes of election for officers, but somebody want to move the agenda? And we can see if there's discussion, Jeff, Bob second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the agenda?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of the agenda is written, hi?
Hi.
Hi, Mary.
Hey, Mary.
Um, okay. So that's the agenda. First, hi, Christian, all right, we're knocking it out of the park here. Um, so for the first stage in election of officers, for the sake of slight appropriateness here, I'm gonna hand it to Stephen, and then we can step through elections.
Great. Yeah, so we're gonna elect a chair, a vice chair. Have you guys been running with a clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, three positions. Um, so I would open it up to the members for discussion.
I like to nominate Jan as our chair.
Second.
Uh, second by Vince. Is there any discussion on, um, the proposal on the table?
So, so I'd like to ask, anybody else want to be chair? I yield to you.
In response, and hearing no response, uh, can we get a motion, please?
Uh, well, I think all we have to do is vote on it because motion second so far.
All right, let's take a vote, who would like to see Jan Last Bear be our chair for another year? That is all in favor unanimous.
All abstaining.
You don't have to.
Vote right for yourself.
That's all right.
Okay, um, do you have a nomination for vice?
I would nominate Jeff Goodrich as vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, second, we have a second.
I can, I can run it from here, Stephen.
You got it.
All right, do we have any other nominations for vice chair or any conversation around that nomination? All right, all those in favor of Jeff Goodrich as vice chair?
Hi.
Hi. Unanimous minus one, abstention. And then seeing as I've loaded, loaded the deck on this one, I would nominate Vince Crowe to be our clerk for another year.
Second.
Second.
Beautiful. Thank you, Vince. Any conversation, other nominations, people dying for the job? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Very good, thank you Vince, thank you Jeff, and we will keep the band together and, uh, move forward. I, I didn't point out to Vince, the, the, um, the thing I noticed in the Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting where they got Stephen to be their clerk.
Oh, yeah.
About how they swung that, but I think we, we are very happy to have Vince be the clerk.
We'll talk about that next year.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't want, I'm glad you mentioned that afterwards.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, do we have public comment on items not on the agenda? Do you have anybody in the room there?
Oh, no, it's, it's just the three of us here.
Okay. All right, I do not see hands raised from the public. All right, so let us jump into regulation review, final reading.
Final reading.
Maybe just a little context which everybody should know by now. Our goal for tonight is to approve a package, which means zoning and subdivision regs separately, uh, that are proposed in detail to be, um, set up for public hearing, sent out officially, this is the proposed draft that will be put in front of the public hearing, and then set the date for the public hearing. So that's where we would like to end up at the end of this agenda item tonight. So I'll hand that to Stephen, as far as I could tell, Stephen, there was, you, you've got the final version, the, the final reading version in there has, you know, very few
There's
art comments, I don't know if you had things you wanted to direct our attention to that weren't shown in track changes?
Um, no, there
Ernie, did you have a, did you have a question, Ernie?
Well, only that, I went, I opened up Steve's email, there were three Word documents and three PDFs. Um, none of them were like marked up or anything like that, the, the, two of the, uh, thing about the subdivision and zoning had dates of 2009 and 2013, so I'm kind of confused because I'm not understanding why those are the ones we've got, instead of the ones that have been marked up and, and all that sort of stuff.
Um, yeah, I had probably just from the point of view of working, uh, it's fine to have, those dates mean that's what we started with, but I think we need a watermark that is draft, a draft proposed or something, either a footer in red or watermark across every page, because what we put out should be clearly proposed or draft.
Yeah, and let me be the first to acknowledge that there are, I mean, this document, even though it has got all of the edits that we've discussed and came to consensus on.
Yeah.
In it, it is not yet ready for public consumption, um, you know, I haven't, you know, you'll notice the section numbering is a little messed up, the
Okay.
The outline is, needs to be attended to, um, but, you know.
So to Ernie's point, to be clear, and maybe that's, that's worth putting in the minutes, Vince, just say, the, the documents that are in the packet are the, you know, the, the title page has the, uh, the date for the original document that we are editing, but the document in the packet contains
Okay.
the edits.
I was, I was wondering.
They're just not shown.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because it's the final reading and we were kind of doing this uh, sequential thing of just showing the new stuff, and now we have very little new stuff, and it's all in a bundle, but we do need to, certainly for the, for the public hearing and whatever, we'll talk procedure at the end here in terms of, because I, we send it to the neighboring towns, we send it to the TRRC, um, and it, and it needs to be clear.
So, that is the finalized version of the last, finalized is the wrong word, but the, what we talked about in the last meeting put into the document that is in the packet, correct, everything that?
All, all the things we agreed to in the last meeting are incorporated.
And previous meetings, yes, okay.
And previous, yeah, it is the sum of all agreements.
Yes.
Okay.
Union of all agreements.
Yes.
Is there anything, Stephen, that would be useful to point out? Um, things that we maybe toyed with at the last meeting, but then were, were open or ambiguous enough that they didn't get included, I don't know if there's anything, I don't have anything specific in mind, but was there something like, well, the, the ponds, or the, you know, there were, there were things we talked about, and then it seemed like a little too big a lift, and we said, nope, we're not gonna include it.
Yeah, uh, there, there are at least two that I remember, one being the, um, you know, some language that the, uh, Two Rivers Review had pointed out was being ambiguous under our shoreline protection, uh, overlay, um, I, you know, without receiving any, you know, specific language to modify that, I, I, you know, my feeling is that we just, and, and you know, this idea that we're, I'd like to look at, we'd like to look at those overlay districts in more detail down the road, I left that language in, as is, um, for next time, um, there had been some discussion amongst the members around, uh, our ponds, uh, it's, um, specific use language, and, um, I just, you know, without having, um, you know, sort of the expertise to, uh, you know, deal, deal with that intelligently, um, you know, I think the member had brought up, um, you know, differentiating between, you know, excavated ponds and dams, um, I decided to just uh, leave it as we had left it in the original, or, or the last edit. I had removed some aspects of it, but haven't taken it any further. Um, the other sort of open, uh, and, uh, uh, open, um, concept was around, uh, um, you know, we had removed as an overlay, the, um, public water systems, and my recommendation in the last reading was to move that to a specific use provision. Uh, in discussion in open meeting, at our last meeting, we decided to remove that altogether. Um, Jeff pointed out that it's, you know, managed by the state, jur, you know, it's state jurisdiction. Um, and at that point, there was some discussion about the Norwich Fire District lands in, you know, in the context of those being a public water supply, if we needed to do anything in terms of, um, you know, specifying protections for that.
Isn't that, uh, go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, uh, so, uh, with respect to shorelands, uh, shoreline considerations, I agree with Steve, we kicked that down the road. So we'll get to that later, um, my recommendation for ponds was just take whatever pond stuff we have out. But, uh, Steve's right in terms of what we talked about last time, because ponds are regulated by the state whether they're excavated or not. And then the question about Norwich Fire District, um, I had a couple of discussions with Steve on, on, uh, as we passed in the night a couple of times, uh, uh, so the question of
That's the day.
The day, yes, was the day, both times.
Yeah.
The, uh, the question of whatever protections may exist in that, in that setting, I would take everything out but the Norwich Fire District, so to the extent we're concerned about protections for public water supply, I think we only need to look at one, and that's Norwich Fire District. So help me out, we have public water supplies as it's talked about, and then we have an overlay that is Aquifer Protection District for that wellhead of the Fire District well. Are
That's part of
The overlay is still active, correct?
Yeah, that, that's part of
Aquifer overlay is still active.
Yes, we have the Charles Brown Brook watershed, and we have the Feral Farm overlay, for lack of a better way to say it. The rest of it can be taken out, those two can, you know, the language can stay with respect to Norwich Fire District.
Yeah, so this is, if you guys can see on the screen, this is the Aquifer Protection Overlay Geography. Um, there's, it's broken into two areas, this is the purple area, um, in the south here is the primary, that's where the wellhead is located, and this is the secondary. And, you know, I, I, without, you know, the low, you know, specific local context to understand the Fire District in the context of a public water supply, um, do we need to do anything specific to protect it as a public water supply, or is the Aquifer Protection Overlay sufficient?
It's, it's sufficient, and the
Okay.
State will eat our lunch if we do anything.
Okay, okay.
No.
Um, so, those
So is there another, sorry, Stephen, is there another, to Jeff's point about Charles Brown Brook lands, is there another, uh, piece to this, where it's the, whatever that is, is that the backup, uh, uh, catch basin for something that is the old, the Area Five and all this stuff for that Brook, or is that not as officially designated? Well, the brown overlay that Steve just showed, um, I think included at least a part of that, but Oh, I was, I was talking out by like Area Five feeding the So the, uh, the reservoir that was just above the Norwich Pool, the dam was taken out recently, but the watershed remains in case we need a backup water supply. Yeah. And I think that's referenced in the language that I looked at about a week ago.
As, as long as you're sure, that's probably enough.
I, and, and we can come back next time if I'm out to lunch, but
I, I think the larger question is, do, you know, the, it did, well, let me say, the initial question was, do we need to have a special overlay for the public water systems in the town, and I think the answer to that is no. Moving into a specific use, the, again, the answer was no. The last question was, have we done enough to protect the, um, the Fire District's public water supply?
Yeah, yeah, my only comment is keep any language related to the Norwich Fire District, get rid of the rest.
Uh, in my review of the, um, that overlay, it didn't specifically mention the Fire District. These are all, this is, that's in the Aquifer Protection Overlay, we're not touching that.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that is the Fire District, you know, that's what runs in the hydrants, so that
Okay.
They're one in the same in terms of, that's the source of the, of the Fire District water, so whether we link the Aquifer Protection District to the entity that is the Fire District is not the important piece, it's
Well, I mean, I
Around the well is called out as special.
Yeah, and it is protected, the Aquifer for the town of Norwich is protected by a, a overlay district, which is a right and proper use of an overlay district. So I say, you know, that, um, those two issues were the open issues for me after leaving, uh, last, um, last meeting.
Okay. Um, and then, so those are the, those are the kind of the, some of the changes we left parked, what are the, what are the agreements or, or anything that you want to point out, or anything anybody else has noticed in a final reading that, uh, we should be conscious and, and talk about a little bit?
Um, I have nothing else that, um, you know, needs to be discussed now.
Okay, does any other, any member comments or topics that you'd like to bring up?
I, I guess I'd throw out there, uh, the, uh, I mean, we did talk initially, I think it was like around the storage, there seemed to be excessive language. Uh, the storage facilities, well, there were, there was a big section like gravel and ground, uh, I forget the, the exact context.
Oh, how many cubic yards of
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, I, I mean, that, on, on the one hand, we were putting like, if that was something that the DRB was engaged in, they should, you know,
Hmm.
Approach or educate, but, but we did definitely get feedback from them before hoping for, you know, it is citizen government, uh, you know, the, any guidances they, they do find helpful. Uh, I don't want to use that to derail what is here, I guess we'd have this process of, of putting it out there, so I would be cognizant of, you know,
Okay.
Mention it to a DRB.
Yeah.
Or if, if this is going in like the opposite direction that they want, then maybe it was too much.
Can, can we, uh, can you expand on that a little bit and let, maybe look at the specific, um, was it?
It was in something like, um, excavation or staging area.
Okay, so, yeah, so a specific use?
I, I didn't know if it was just too much in the weeds, that maybe it did make a lot
Yeah, I think it's there, it's, it's in there, and there was some amount.
Okay, fifty-one, all right, so
Number of cubic yards.
And, and, yeah, and, you know,
This is exactly the type of stuff that, you know, w- we should consider, um, amending, uh, removing, just because it, if it's requires too much expertise, it's too specific. Um, I'm sorry, you guys.
No, it's, it's getting there.
Yeah, fifty-two, fifty-one.
Four oh five, go to four oh five, Steve, up a little.
Yeah, okay, so it's not actually on page fifty-one.
Yeah, you're right, because you're
Yeah, because, yeah, you're right, everything's
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I think, you know, this covers excavation and fill, um, I think this is good to have, um, maybe it, was it around, uh, sand gravel and extraction?
We just, I, there was a question last time, just to confirm that that five hundred cubic yards was a re, was large enough to not cause trouble with small projects, but to flag something that, that should be flagged, that was, that was my sense of the discussion. Yeah, me too, and it, that's, that's a big number, Hanover's twenty, Hartford's two hundred. Uh, so there, there's plenty of room there, uh, and I agree with Steve, to the extent there's not a permit with a DRB associated with excavation at that scale, it makes sense to capture it.
Yeah, I mean, the fill, piles of fill can create drainage issues, um, for the town right of ways and for neighbors, um, so it should be regulated. Um, and I, I don't
So does this count for the, I mean, when it says filling, then if, if I want to, I'm just picturing some people that were on Willie Hill who were having a wedding, and they made an enormous flat area uh, for the tent, um, and I'd probably not fifty, five hundred cubic yards, but it was close, so if someone had a project that was gonna do some geoscaping of large scale, that would, this would flag it if it got to the five hundred limit, right?
Yes. Yep, it, that level of fill excavation or storage requires, is a conditional use.
Yeah, so if you're either digging a great big hole, flattening a section of Vermont, or, or just making a pile and leaving it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jan, your ten concern might not have been more than twenty or thirty cubic yards. Oh, it was, I mean, what, you can get five cubic yards in a big dump truck, this was
It's huge, it's huge.
It's pushing
You can go by and see it, I mean, they, it's enormous, I don't know It's a lot, it's a lot of them.
It was thirty, it was easily thirty or forty dump trucks.
Do we have a zoning violation? So, I mean, what, what do you guys
It was more just a sanity violation in the sense that it was for a one-day event.
Did they, um, remove said fill?
No, no, God, no.
Okay, so they have a zoning violation?
Well, it's about eight years old at this Forty yards, it's over five hundred. I mean, forty dump trucks. I bet it, I bet it was over forty dump trucks, but anyway.
Years ago?
Uh, yeah, at least.
They're still in the statute of limitations.
COVID adds five years, so I can't remember, but anyway, you can, you just drive up Willie Hill and look to the right, it looks like it's begging for a tennis court or something, it, it just
Okay, yeah, that's exactly the type of activity that requires review, so it doesn't, um, cause, uh, undue or adverse
Where is this, by the way? I, I run up and down
It's, it's right when you, when you hit the, um, it, it's the first house, if you come out of Hawk Pine and you take a, a left, it's the first house on the left, it's a large contemporary house with, it's got a, it's got a lot of, somebody did a lot of work with lighting consultants there, because the lights are pretty amazing. It sits on the top of the hill with a pond and then a long field in front of it.
Yeah.
So
Who would be concerned on that site more about wetland impacts and buffer?
All of it.
Yeah.
All of it.
So, is, so to that conversation, you know, is five hundred the right number, is really where we are here, and if, you know, I'm, I'm winging it when I say how many dump trucks it was, but uh, if you were a neighbor of someone who was bringing in two hundred yards or three hundred yards, would you want to have a way to force the issue or talk about it?
I mean, five hundred is a lot.
It's a big number.
What would you say?
Well, you, you know, sitting here, I, I think Hartford's two hundred, and I think Hanover's twenty, it might be fifteen. The idea is, if you're, if you're doing earthwork not related to a permit, now you gotta deal with a permit, and I think the issue broadly relates to not just so much earthwork as what are the environmental impacts, is there a wetland, are we violating setbacks, are there other permits that are needed, that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, neighboring properties, public facilities, services, surface water and groundwater supplies, natural, cultural, or historic or scenic features, or other fragile features, yeah, we might be able to clean that language up a little bit, and I also think five hundreds, uh,
I think, is
Pretty high.
If that's the only hook you have, if, if nobody, if somebody's not building anything, there's no structure, and all they're doing is landscaping, quote unquote, but they're doing it by moving several hundred cubic yards.
Yeah.
Then I, I think we want something that's a reasonable threshold.
I think so too, and I, I think the way to answer that would be to, you know, review what other towns in the region have done. So, I mean, I think, I think that's pretty quick to track down, um, so
Oh, can, can we, how do we deal with that in the sense that we want to vote on something tonight?
Well, what we can do is in the motion, um, we could, oh, you know, make a motion to approve with amendments as discussed, or, you know, capture the fact that there will be subsequent
We would, we would have to empower you to review neighboring towns and put a number in there less than five hundred and more than twenty, or whatever we agree to. Yeah, I, you know, sitting here, I would say two hundred, um, just give it a shot, if we want to review it in our next round, in our, our next tranche, we can do that. I don't, I'm, I'm glad to have Steve look at other towns, but I don't, I don't really see the need, I'd throw two hundreds a lot, if we're looking at dump truck loads that range from eight to fifteen per ten, you know, we're, it's ten dump trucks, and we're there. Yeah, so I guess to simplify, if there's no uh, strong opposition, I would say, can we change that to two hundred with just a little, a little leeway that says Stephen can go out and look, and if there's some uh, reason that in his judgment that should be adjusted based on neighboring towns, uh, we'll give him some leeway on that, but it's two hundred if he doesn't find something significant, are, are people all right with that? Okay. Good, thank you, Bob, that's, that's a good catch.
Um, so, sort of carrying on the, um, the ponds, I, you know, there was some discussion at the last meeting to, um, look a bit further into that. I don't, um, yes, but I, you know, I think we should just leave it as, you know, sort of as written, um, having edited in this, in the third read, um.
Well, so is there, if, if we're, at this point, it sounds like we're, you know, minutes away from being ready to close this, so if, if there's a topic that takes ten minutes of conversation to put it into this first bundle, then, you know, we have the time right now to do it, if it's gonna be more than ten or fifteen minutes, then we should bump it. I, I'm fine leaving it, folks, I want to take it out going forward, because we just talked about excavation, fill excavation, it's gonna address the pond thing.
Yeah, so what, what about, what about this, you know, where it says, um, this section applies to small artificially bodies of water capable of holding insect in excess of twenty-four thousand cubic feet of water. Is, that seems to me to sort of err on the wrong side, I mean, if, at some point, ponds are gonna be regulated by the state, and larger ponds and impoundment is absolutely regulated by the state, should we not be concerned about things smaller than twenty-four thousand?
All ponds, so I think the question is, so where do you build a pond, you build a pond uh, where there's a wetland or a water source, and the state's gonna regulate that, so it ain't gonna happen. The state's next concern is what's the dam height, or the structure height?
Yeah.
Which is it, which is the threat, if it's in ground, it's not so much of a threat, but you're, you're excavating in a, in a jurisdictional, um,
Not necessarily, I mean, there, there are, you know, I, I have seen many spring-fed ponds that are built in what is clearly not a wetland or watershed, that's for sure.
I've never seen a pond built outside of wetland.
I have. And, you know, I think from a fire safety perspective, having, you know, the ability to build or impound water in areas far away from dry pond
I don't think it's our issue.
I would like to remove A. I think that really sort of will clear, I think everything I think everything below A, A, you know, B, um.
Do we have a definition of pond or impoundment or something in the?
Folks, all it's doing right now is creating a large threshold, relatively speaking. There's no need to do anything tonight, I don't think.
Aside from the fact that. We, this excludes regulating anything under. Twenty four thousand cubic feet of water.
Oh, I agree with you then.
So I would.
This makes us less able to do with, you know, this this thresholds it high.
Yeah.
I agree with what Steve said.
So for section four point oh six.
Does anybody, does anybody have a problem with that, which to me, the the intent or the 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 result of that. Would be to have this section apply to more ponds and smaller ponds.
Yeah.
For now, we can get rid of it. So I agree with, I agree with that.
Okay.
Far as just as since we're looking at uh the scope of things. How small, what is considered a pond? Is there going to be some sort of gray area? Of house, how large a puddle has to be before it becomes a pond?
I think a pond requires some intention by the landowner to construct it.
Okay. So just wanna make sure we're not getting in into any trouble with.
Is the definition required or do we already have one somewhere down below?
Um, that I don't know, but let's check. If we have a definition for it. I mean, I'd be. Do you guys hear me spelling out the alphabet? I hope not.
Your toes are twitching too.
It's in the minutes.
I know. Yeah, he write it down. I don't see if O comes before R. Nope, nothing on ponds.
Great, fantastic. No, we don't have anything. We don't have a definition for pond. I'd be a little reluctant to Vince's point. Of defining. Creating a definition of a pond.
Yeah. As long as, you know, and there's a reasonable then this standard here where if some, if a kid makes a puddle in in the driveway. And somebody, you know, sicced the DRB on them, I think uh it would fail that standard, but Ernie?
Uh, I was gonna say, I mean, we could just use a common definition literally right out of of a. Dictionary. Um, and incorporate it. I mean, it's for most people, you know, upon when you see one. But um. You know, for the sake of of um. For the sake of 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 regulations, probably is a good idea to to define it because. Just second the train's going by.
We can hear you fine.
Are you can he, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can't hear you.
It's all right.
Yeah.
Um, um, it 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 seems to me that when you don't have a definition uh of something. It kind of leave, you know, in in just in any kind of legislative writing, it leaves, it leaves you open to people abusing the system. Um, and and you gotta be careful because, I mean, you don't want to be having to regulate a puddle. Um, or or an access bill or any of those sorts of things. You know, you have to sort of, it has to be something that's is there. Um, that on purpose.
Mary?
Well, I I I just wanna make a comment, Ernie, that if you're from Maine, you might think about something very different about a pond. So, you know, and I I say that just because the 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 language, the language of what's a pond. In northern New England is just does vary so much. And so um having some kind of definition might not be a bad thing. You go to Maine and the, you know, lakes are called ponds and ponds are called lakes, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why I'm saying something that is defined in in a in a standard.
Yeah.
Easy to find re- um reference.
Yeah.
And and then make and and use it. I mean, it can, I'm sure there are different levels and different sizes and stuff.
Does does the state have a definition?
And, you know, I don't know. Um, there 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 might be competing definitions. I don't know if Title twenty four, Chapter one seventeen defines it. Um, I'm sure, you know. Um, somewhere under vermont.gov, there is a. Definition for a pond.
Is there, uh, I mean, if we go back to the thing that we deleted because twenty four thousand was a big number. Uh, and the threshold was way too tall. If we took that, basically that sentence, but not twenty four thousand, we. Can weigh down. Can that work?
I mean, without getting too carried away, if we're gonna do a definition, grab it from Webster's dictionary.
I I. But I would think that if I. This. Will be triggered when someone approaches the town of Norwich to construct a pond. I wouldn't want to then have a definition that was available. In our definitions for use outside of that context. Somebody can say.
To your, to your first point, though, Stephen, I guess my my question is for the people who. Look at the regs without coming to talk to you. And can find reason to believe what they're doing doesn't need a permit. And then get the excavator out and have some fun. Um, at what point do we want to make it more obvious that they need to come and talk to you? Ernie?
Um, I have found uh the definition. It's ten VSA section uh fifty two ten. Private ponds are defined as. Ponds owned by one person or entity and located entirely on the owner's property if naturally maybe up to twenty acres in size. Artificial private ponds may be any size.
Okay, I the private pond. On entirely on owner occupied land.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that works.
Um, and and it's ten VSA fifty two ten.
Ten VSA.
We've got it. We got a VSA reference and it's not crazy, then let's use it.
Yep, um, and would. Yeah, that's easy. I mean, I I. How do you guys feel about the sort of second part of that where it's of any size, et cetera?
The if it's natural part? I don't think we're talking about the natural, we don't definite, a definition of a natural pond is. Not what we're talking about here, right?
No.
Artificial private ponds, uh, they're saying may be any size. I'm not quite sure why they. Distinguish.
Artificial is the key word.
Yeah, that's to Steve's, to Stephen's point, that the intent to make a pond to.
Yeah.
Date your pond, expand your pond, whatever, is the artificial. I wanna, I wanna.
Yeah.
The difference between, the difference between a natural and an artificial pond is only the size. The other parts of the definition of a pond is that they're owned by. Uh, uh, one person or entity and a located entire on the entirely on the owner's property. That's the.
Yeah, I think that's that's excellent. And, you know, if somebody. At some point, if you build a pond large enough, you start running into state regulation and federal regulation. So, yeah, of any size.
Okay.
Another permit for it. I think that's great.
All right, so let's use that.
Yep.
Any, any other flags, any other? Topics?
Yeah, while we're scrolling, is there a VSA for the definition of an attorney, Ernie?
What?
I wanna know.
It has some comment about light bulbs and so forth.
How shallow the attorney definition is.
Yeah, okay, so this was, this is another thing we flagged at the last meeting, um. This is essentially describes what happens um when you have a property that's in two zoning districts. Um, yeah. And ours is a a bit, um. Well, overwrought in the sense that it requires development review boards uh or subject to conditional use. Um, that, you know, that's, that's a bit excessive. Um, I would recommend recommend this language. Where a district boundary line divides a lot. Of record. At the time such law law is adopted, the regulations for the less restricted part. Shall not extend more than thirty feet into the more restricted part. So if you're. And. We don't have a lot of those circumstances. Um, but, you know, at some point, we might have, you know, we might look at conservation districts or, um. You know, our overlays. Though the overlays do talk to that a little bit, um. In 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 general. When that happens, um, you know, there is some concession to the less restrictive. Um, but I think we could be explicit in, you know, section E here.
So what you're saying, what you're, what you're proposing is if I have a lot that is split. By either, by any of these overlays, whether it's a protection, ridge line. Uh, different zoning district. I, and I need to, I can't be in both. Uh, so you need to move the line. Uh, but you can't move the less restricted line more than thirty feet. That's what you're proposing?
Yeah, so if you're, if you have something that's, you know, in a residential district. And and you want to put an accessory use structure on your house, uh, you know, accessory use structure on your property. That can be thirty feet over the line into, say, a conservation district. Where that use would be perhaps a conditional use or even prohibited. So. That's, um. You know, that's fairly standard language. What's not standard is uh the requirement that that be reviewed by the development. Review board under conditional use review.
So that makes sense, but how does it, how does it work? Say, use ridge line. Say I have a decent size, you know, and somebody's got fifty acres of land.
Yeah.
It is clipped to some degree by the line of the ridge line protection district. And they want to do something with it. Do they only have to follow the rules of that district? In the part of the property, if the, and then the development envelope is either in or out of that.
This doesn't apply to special overlays. This is just between zoning districts.
Okay.
Okay.
So my question, Yon, uh, what's, why not keep fifty though, Steve?
The thing that.
I wouldn't change it. It's pretty small to me.
Fifty is small, um. I, what I would recommend, you know, whatever that final number is, that if we don't go through conditional use review for that.
That's fair enough. The so uh staff. I'd keep it at fifty, but I agree with Steve. Get rid of the the initial news.
Okay. Yeah, and thirty, thirty is not a very. Big number. Fifty, I mean, if it had fifty in it, but.
We have a lot of sections between village residential and village bu- business.
Which is fine. I, that's the only area I agree with you, but I'm okay with that personally.
W- well.
Especially if I'm throwing cat litter over the fence.
Which.
Are you allowed to throw cat litter over the fence in village residential but not village?
No, you can't throw cat litter, snow, or barbecue smells.
I know.
Um, yeah, I, you know.
Does anybody feel strongly for thirty rather than fifty? All right, stick with fifty then.
Okay. Okay, no problem.
Any other topic?
Can I substitute this language over here?
Yeah, I mean, I I think that's. What you're trying to do is make it so that the DRB doesn't need to see it under conditional use. Um, and that's what that language does.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay.
I'm just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is gonna be possible, but I, but given that. It's only seven fifteen, I'm gonna put it on the table just for grins. The. Correspondence we got from the DRB that is item six on the agenda. Um, asks for clarification about something in the regs. Um. Is there any prayer of a solution of that question in a way that could roll it into this? Ernie?
Yeah, um, it was explained to me uh several years ago by a former zoning administrator. Who helped write it or was there present when it was being written, when when our current. What I call the black box was 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 developed. Um. The, the, the way I understand it is. Let's say you have a parcel and you subdivide it into two parcels. And 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 each of those part, oh, let's put this way, you started, you start with a, let's say you're in a, in an area where you can. Where a particular parcel could have, the whole overall thing could have, let's say, eight parcels total. Inside it. Um, and somebody wants to simply simply subdivide it into. Um. Two parcels and 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 it's in an area, let's say, that the minimum size is two acres, so. Basically, what happens is is after that, those two separate pieces, those two separate parcels, and keep in my, keep in mind that this is partly because. When you subdivide, some owners might be, the ownership of the property might become separate later. It's it's preparation for separating ownership. So you 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 don't want to have a conflict. Between the the people or a- any kinds of conflict based on the subdivision. If if, let's say you have the the two later on. Um, somebody moves in and you can only have, you know, out of the eight, four in each of those two. Um, you can't have somebody else come in and say, I want to have six, and then the other guy can only be stuck with two left. You know, I mean, because that, you know, you're looking at the overall, um, it'd still only be eight, but on one side, they'd be. Too small and and the other side, well, they'd be okay because they're big, but the small one, you can't do that. So the thing you want to do is prevent. Prevent, you know, sort of using it as a way to skirt the the regulation. If you, if you, if you say basically. Each subdivision is treated as a separate. Um, entity later on. So if you want to subdivide one. You have to, it it's it's still like the the same maximum, uh, same minimum size and and all those regulations that were applied. When the whole overall. Parcel had was first divided. And it will keep on going down until, you know, you finally reach. The smallest subdivision available and then that's it. You know, um, each each sub, each each parcel gets subdivided. To the next, next lowest level, but um it may, then it gets to a point where you can't subdivide it anymore.
So Stephen, I don't, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into things. If if there's not a way to do this. Help them simply, then we'll talk about it uh on the agenda, but we'll leave it for later. What do you think?
I don't think there's a simple way to, um. You know, to tactically edit that portion to bring clarity.
Okay, all right.
And and can I make a suggestion that maybe we just consider rewriting it all together?
Yes.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that on item six. I was just trying to hail Mary to see whether we could get it across the finish line in this bundle, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's.
Too big a stretch.
It's, it, yeah, it it'll bring up other topics.
Okay, all right. So let's stick with what we got here. Anything else? In in this bundle, anything else on the, anything in the subdivision regs that we should touch on?
No, I mean, the subdivision regulations um were, you know, we got consensus on those changes very early in the process. And we haven't opened them up since, so.
Okay.
Um. That's sort of as is. Still, I mean, it needs to be cleaned up for public consumption. Um, sorry.
So let's, let's talk logistics, logistics.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it.
Um, if you, you were putting out a. A plea for anybody who's expert at MS Word in terms of. Swallowing all these changes and make the formatting pretty. Um, so that's a standing request if anybody has those skills. Um.
Does anyone have those skills?
I have people that work for me that have those skills. I have people that work for me that have those skills.
We start to get to three, three degrees of separation.
I use Word all the time, but it's, it seems to be like a typical Microsoft product, it changes, you know, when you're not looking.
Yeah.
That's an attorney thing.
You know, I could probably figure out, and I could probably figure it out, I am a little bit like.
All right, well, let's, said, somebody, if you want to take it offline, but it, I know that as soon as it starts auto. Setting the numbers of sections, I immediately groan and it's, it, it's too much and it's gonna have a mind of its own. That's what you're talking about, so.
Yep.
I'm off the list.
Stephen, I'll message you offline, Stephen, I just.
All right.
I'll run it through, I'll run through an AI model, I bet it comes out pretty darn quick and easy. Okay, thank you, Christian.
Christian, Christian will help, thank you.
Yeah.
So let's step through this, Stephen, so we have. Through the magic of, of AI and Christian's help, we have a document. We have two documents, Jeff, Jeff Luvell, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask the question that, are, are you gonna be doing a proofreading as well as a formatting? I mean, I've noticed some typos and things like that.
Um, uh.
We should. Um, I mean, I think that. I mean, this is, this is going, let's, let's, so let's do the sequencing and then see. I mean, because we're talking about what goes to public hearing, um, and then it comes back. So the, the final thing, and then it goes to the select board for their public hearing. So yes, it would be embarrassing if we put something out that had lots of typos. Uh, but this is not a, this is not a, a legal document going out for the last time, so.
Yeah. To that, to that point, um, uh. The point at which we can make no changes to this document is.
Right.
Once we've made the, um, the public, you know, the war, once we've warned the public hearing. So that'll go in the newspaper as, you know, this sort of standard warning process. That happens fifteen days before our next regular meeting.
Okay.
So we have that window to do, um, you know. Typos, just to sort of, you know, document cleaning that.
So let's, let's back up from that and, and see if we can work it out, so the proposal right now is to do the public hearing. At the beginning of our June meeting, which will be June tenth. And then, so then the idea would be, I guess, Stephen, if, if you do the magic of rolling it all together. And get it back out to people in a week or even, you know, the end of next week, then. People can read through it and just send you what are essentially proofreading. Suggestions that are totally at your discretion to, to clean up and roll in, nothing, obviously nothing policy or, or substantial. Um, and then that gets you by what looks like, call it the thirty first, no, thirty first. Uh. Twenty fourth.
Yeah. Twenty days before, um. Yeah, because, you know, they, they're taking, the, you know, we have to craft the warning and that, that takes a little bit of time and there's, you know, certain, um. Dates that. You know, we can have it, um, published in the newspaper.
I think there's value to having another set of eyes on it other than just Stevens, that's, uh, always good. Policy from a proofreading point of view, um, maybe we just get. One person or two people to raise their hand and say, I will look it over on two days' notice to tidy it up. Um, and leave it at that.
Well, yeah, let me, let me do the work and I'll send it out, um.
Ernie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, and, and it's just something that came up on the screen earlier tonight, I didn't catch it elsewhere. Um, but I saw something where it said the regulation and it is. Is, is not at all complying with current usage, current language in, in, in. Regulation and statutory drafting, and it said something like, something, something will, something, something, I can't remember, the word will. Is, is death in, in, in legal drafting, you never use will when you try to make a mandatory statement, you'd be, they use shall. Which is the old word, which has its own problems, or must. Um, you gotta find a way to fit must in there instead. Um, but will is not considered mandatory. It's considered permissive.
Well, and I would not want to address that, folks, unless there's a specific incident that you're.
Yeah, I mean, there's a hundred and seventy one, uh, sorry, seventy one.
Yeah.
Um, places that it says will.
Well, I mean.
That's easy, just do fine, change all to shall or must. I'm sure that'll be fine.
Chat GPT.
Okay, yeah, that, that does sound like a can of worms if you're talking seventy of them.
Well, it depends on if you, if something's supposed to be mandatory or if it's supposed to be permissive, that's what you gotta determine. Will is definitely considered permissive, but earlier, that thing I was talking about seemed to be mandatory.
If you can find, you know, one or two that are specific that you can point at, then I'm.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm willing to like, at least look for, for that kind of language, I don't know if I can.
Look for it, I would, I guess I would propose that we, you know, that at this stage, given how many times all of our eyes have been on it. That it's, uh, we would leave it to Stevens discretion to make a final call on a word here or a word there.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't change the will until our next, next endeavor. Unless there's.
We can certainly flag, we can certainly flag anything, we're gonna, we're gonna run through these again. Um, in the next go around, not, not in this state, okay? So just from a timing point of view, then, um. We talked last meeting relative to prepping, uh, so there are two things. One was the officially required report of what we changed. That goes to Two Rivers and neighboring towns, and Stephen, as you sent me that wonderful checklist form. They're pretty, it's, it's pretty extensive, but it's pretty specific in terms of what you changed and how it relates to. You know, everything. Um. So. You are leading that whole charge of getting that. Form filled out.
Yeah.
In the timeframe we're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, then the other piece of kind of information planning here was. The public hearing. And I think the discussion last time was. Uh, for the public hearing, we want it to be a planning commission. Kind of front and center statement with staff to the side. Answering questions and implementing and so forth, so that to that end, I would propose. Um. That, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, well, I'm certainly willing to present the, uh. The changes as the, as the chair of the planning commission to say, here is a, you know, PowerPoint format. For public consumption, highlights of the changes. And here's what we were thinking, and, uh, here's what's changed, and I can work with Stephen on the. You know, from the report to say, well, these fifty, sixty percent of the changes were required by state law. Um, and then we had these that were discretionary and here's what we were thinking, but the idea was. It's the planning commission as the deliberative body. That came up with those changes, and so. The public hearing should look like that. Any thoughts on that?
A point of order here, so, um. There is the report that I have to produce that goes to, um, the Department of, um, Housing. And, um, Two Rivers, the, but there's, you know, there's some other, uh, detail here in the summary. In the notice of the hearing itself. Um. Beyond just the date, time and place, um, so the, it asks for a summary, including a statement of purpose. The ge- geographic areas affected, table of contents, listing of section headings or description of the place. Within the municipality where the full text may be examined, um. And this is, this is the, the warning that goes into, into the newspaper, um. And so that, it asks for either the full text of the material or a summary. So we'll need to include a summary for the, for the warning that, um.
So that's.
That could be published.
Well, I mean, so the high level statement, as you said, Stephen, was, you know, we're, we're modernizing. We're aligning with current state regulations, um, and then we're flagging. You know, we did some things for ADU, we did some things to. Affordable housing, we did on-farm business and open air market definition, I mean, I think those are the kinds of things. Thinking from the public's point of view.
Yeah.
Want to point it out before. Somebody raises their hand and says, you know, wait a minute, you know, I heard this. And they'll, they'll get some rumor in their minds about, you know. The farmer's market is moving to somewhere in rural residential, you can put a farmer's market next to my house in rural residential. That's what I heard, or, you, you know, pick a rumor, you can come up with it, I want to be out front and say. You know, not every tiny detail, but these things to promote affordable housing, uh, and. This stuff about farm businesses. And just be, be transparent without looking for trouble.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll need that sort of at, at least the summary. When we send out the warning.
So we're talking ten days from now.
Ten days from now.
So can we, is there a way to have, you know, it's, it's me, Stephen, and maybe one other person. Who wants to raise their hand and help with, help with some of this, it certainly doesn't need to be all of us, we don't need to do a special meeting to run through every bullet item. But it doesn't need to just be, uh, one of us, is anybody? Willing to help me out with that? Ernie?
Well, I, 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 I'm interested in helping, I'm not a hundred percent sure about my schedule, but I mean, I'd like to, to do it.
You're, you're about to publish a reappraisal list that'll probably keep you a little busy, Ernie.
Uh. This is, this, this, this is, this, this actually has more my attention than, than that does.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, the warning. Process we can handle in my office, right? I mean, that's, we do that all the time, um. Certified mailing and all of that, I think.
So if you, you're, the report leads in the sense that that's, that's the, the thing that. Is most comprehensive about what we changed, so then. You're gonna, you draft that over the next few days, call it, from, from your notes of the changes, then. I can look at that and flag what I think is most important to. Make the public aware of. Bounce that off, Ernie, and we can, you know, get to, uh, sort of a draft. That says, and then we just open the public hearing, there'll be some subset of that we include in the warning. And then we open the public hearing with a couple of PowerPoint slides that list it.
Yeah.
Vince? I should be, I should be able to help out too with that, I was thinking through the next. Couple weeks, I, I should be able to do, help out too.
So if, if we leave it at the, at the three of us and Stephen, then we don't have to worry about quorum stuff. Um, and we're just doing a specific edit cleanup. Um, okay, so that's the sequence, Stephen, you, you get a draft of the report that is the, kind of the list of. Changes that they make you talk about. Send that out to the three of us, and we will look at it from a public eye. Uh, a less technical eye, but of what the public might care about and how we want to explain it. From the planning commission's point of view. And then we'll, we'll draft a few slides to open the public hearing.
Yeah, and, and that can, you know, some, sort of substantially happen after the warning's been sent out.
Yes, as long, yeah, as long as we agree what's on the warning and you do the report, we can finalize the. Slot, the PowerPoint slides for the hearing the night before if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay. If we're, if we're good, we'll put them in the packet for that meeting, so, um, that, that'll help anyway.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything else we need to do to clarify the plan? Uh, before we move to. Go forward with this. Okay. All right, I'll take a motion maybe one at a time, zoning regs and subdivision regs separately.
So moved in whatever word you want.
So for Vince, let's get a motion that's official, what do you, what do you call these?
I'll, I'll move to advance the zoning ordinance as we've discussed tonight with the nominal efforts, uh, we're kicking to Steve in the meantime.
Nominal, um, edits.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
All right, so that's the zoning regs, any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor?
Good, can we repeat it, it kind of cut out for me for a second?
Jeff?
Uh, yeah, uh, make a motion to, uh. Accept the zoning ordinance as we've discussed with, uh, nominal edits, uh. Or Steve pursuant to our discussion tonight.
So I, I'd say Vince, it's, it's, um. Move forward with the process. For official submittal of proposed zoning regulation changes.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Now, all those in favor? Unanimous? All right, about the zoning subdivision?
Same motion for subdivision, uh, although I don't know that we have any edits for Steve, so you can exclude that, right?
Yeah, I don't think we've touched the subdivision regs for a couple of meetings, but it's still the same, it's still. Draft proposed changes of the Norwich subdivision regulations to, to move forward into the official approval process. Including public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody, that is a, that is a good chunk of work and a very good progress. And thank you, Stephen, we, we clearly, uh, clearly needed you. All right.
Right on schedule.
Right on schedule, exactly.
Yeah.
I can, I'll go back and look at what we scheduled, what, it's, Vince is getting congratulated here.
Yeah.
Had a good baseball game.
Oh, baseball game, all right, I thought it was Dad that was getting the congratulations.
Did you win?
Oh, he got the game ball, sweet.
All right. Good job.
That, that's something worth celebrating.
Yes, indeed, all right. Okay, thank you, everybody, um.
Good job.
Yep, yep, so we will, we'll move as planned, um, okay, so one other piece of that. Uh, because we've been bouncing around a little bit here. I would propose, we talked about this before, we want to make a particular effort. To notify town groups that might be interested, so I would ask that. The, this group gives the chair permission to contact. The chair of the Conservation Commission, Energy Committee, Historic, you know, DRB and so forth. And notify them, uh, that, that we've made this milestone and to keep their eyes open, select board, obviously. So, uh, if nobody has any trouble with that, then I think we, we want to. Go as, as full on as possible in terms of. Asking for comment and. asking for comment and get, making it visible. Okay.
Good plan. Thank you for doing that.
What, what about, and this one, I'm, I'm not, I don't feel strongly about, uh, it's up to, up to the group. What about our ever popular listserv? Is there, is there any benefit of?
Yeah, why not? I mean, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Let's get more people knowing about it rather than just people who go to meetings.
So I would think, you know, and again, there's, there's no point. You do it too far ahead of the public hearing and then it evaporates before the time. So.
We'll do it at the same time. I mean, we put, we post um, to, you know, warnings to the, the, the listserv for our, our regular meetings. We'll have, you know, we could do a special, you know, we don't, the planning commission doesn't normally hold public hearings, so there's.
Right. So I think the, that would be good. So we will do it, call it, you know, Thursday the week before. So what I'll do is I will piggyback right around the same time. Um, but a separate listserv post. They'll go, they'll get the one from you or Pam notifying them, here's the packet. Maybe that's sort of ho-hum, I see that all the time kind of thing. Um, but then I'll do one separately that can then use the same high level bullet points that we've already prepared for the presentation.
Yeah.
That says, here, these are the kind of changes we made. This is what we're gonna be talking about next Tuesday. If you want more detail, it's in the packet. Hope to see you if you care.
Yeah, yeah, and I would suggest you do it a little bit earlier. It's a lot of material. If somebody really wants to do it. Finding out on Thursday that there's a meeting, whatever, Tuesday, I mean. I sometimes, there are plenty of people who've got any night they can get to a meeting, and then there are other people that it's pretty hard to do that, so. If somebody wants to read it and get some thoughts to you, so I would suggest doing it, you know, whatever, a week before that. And, and so that we have, there's no critique of the fact that.
Right, right. The last minute. Yeah, so we're at least a week before. I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go two weeks before, just because people forget, but.
It, it, doesn't it make sense to do it at the same time we post the, the warning publicly fifteen days before the hearing? You could do it again.
Yeah, we could do it twice.
I would say when, you know, when we officially, you know, statutorily warn the hearing, we post it in the listserv as well.
That's.
Well, that's fine. I thought Jan said he was doing it like the Thursday before the meeting, which would not be much time. If it's fifteen days, that's different.
Yeah, I. Are you saying, Stephen, that the actual warning? The wording that's on the warning is, is going to the listserv at that fifteen day point?
Um, no, I'm recommending that it does.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I would still argue, and to Mary's point, do it a little earlier, do it the Monday, a full week before. So I would write something in more friendly terms. Hey, you may have seen this morning. Uh, there's an upcoming public hearing. Here's, here's the user friendly content of what that's gonna be. Vince?
Are correspondence rules still the same for a public hearing as a regular meeting? So would they need to get it in by Thursday? I'm just trying to think through the timeline for people that wouldn't be able to make it to the meeting.
I, I think people.
Um, it's a good question. We should check.
I think we would accept, I, I would recommend that we accept any comment up until the moment and including at the public hearing.
Right, right. So I think the point, the point would be the, the mailbox is open theoretically in terms of official comment that gets bundled together as input from the public meeting. That is closed when we close the public hearing.
Yeah.
And so whether they wanna put it in in writing Tuesday afternoon, June tenth, uh, it will still roll into that bundle.
Okay, I like the week ahead because with, with that in mind.
Okay.
I, I was just gonna say, even if it's not included in the packet, any comment will be, correspondence will be brought into the public record. At the public hearing, so.
And we are required to kind of answer those comments. If somebody says something verbally in the public hearing and, or if we get a letter and then delivered at the public hearing, we will kind of process those and respond to those and say, here's, here's how we responded to that public, uh, comment.
Yeah, and we're required to ha- ha- hold at, at least one public hearing. So if there's substantial comments that gives members pause, we can always hold another public hearing.
Yep. Okay, so the sequence is, um, we will do a, uh, when the warning goes out fifteen days before, we'll put that in the listserv. But it'll, it'll look official and, and slightly intimidating or boring, whichever we want.
Doesn't have to be.
But we'll, but we'll follow up. My point is that we will then have a version on, say, Monday, June third that clarifies it. It says when the, you know, reminds them when the hearing is and does the high level bullet items of, of what are the topics. Okay. All right, that sounds good. I think, I think we're doing the work. All right, anything else for agenda item number five? All right. So we touched on six before. Um, what do you think, Stephen? Is this, just leave it for when we've got a fresh brain, or is there some background that's worth hearing?
Um, I, I would say that we sort of, uh, acknowledge this, uh, receipt, you know, as having, we've received it. Um, and park, park it for future discussion.
Is there any, what's the level of urgency from DRB?
Low.
Something happened?
Sorry, uh, it, the, I would say the urgency is low. I mean, we don't have I don't have any subdivision applications in the queue. Um, you know, the board was able to, um, negotiate their, um, you know, the murkiness of that language. What, you know, when they were presented with it, um. You know, I, I, I did, you know, uh, the DRB is aware that, you know, the planning commission is in this bylaw revision.
Okay.
So I would say we, you know, we acknowledge it and, uh, park it for future discussion. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. So if, Vince, if you just wanna call that out on, in the minutes, we, we accepted the, that correspondence. Yeah, the, the way I read it, you know, the, the the subdivision that was, that brought this up was way out on Turnpike Road and large parcels. So it, it was, it was somewhat exceptional and, and it just brought up all these points to a head. To, to your point, Stephen, it's, it's, there's not another one coming that's gonna flay it that way very soon.
Yeah, Jan, I, I think between Ernie and me, we could spend two or three hours on this, so let's kick it down the road.
Okay. Take your point. All right. Um, good, so we will do that and just to, to piggyback that for a minute. Because what we're talking about is putting it in the, the agenda parking lot. Um, and I, I, I was gonna say this at the, at the organizational meeting. Uh, agenda item, but now that we have crossed the, the milestone of getting through those two large drafts. Um, what we're gonna wanna do is bring up our list of things that have been piling up while we were doing that work. So the kinds of things I have on the list are our bylaws, capital planning, short term rentals, town plan update, scenic inventory. I mean, there's that kind of list and, and I think we could put three, four more on easily. So I would propose that, um, to the degree that the public hearing doesn't swallow our meeting, uh, all of our meeting on the tenth, that we start the conversation then to put everything out that's on the table and start prioritizing and, and deciding what our next six months looks like. So to that end, if you have a list, things on the list that, that I missed and, you know, let's, let's come to the second half of the meeting on the tenth with everybody's list that, that we, uh, jotted down three months ago and said we'd deal with later. Okay. Um, affordable housing subcommittee charge, I can maybe between Stephen and, well, Jeff and Jeff Lubel, you can bring us up to date on this. My understanding was that the affordable housing subcommittee made some changes to your bylaws or your charter, I'm not sure which. And when you submitted them to the select board, or at least the select board chair and the town manager, they bumped it back out and said, can the planning commission look at this? So I would open that up to maybe Stephen and the Jeffs.
Can I, can I start with that, be all right? So, um, you know, for many, many years, the affordable housing subcommittee was a subcommittee to the planning commission and was appointed by the planning commission. Um, last year, the select board decided that it wanted to be the body that appointed the affordable housing subcommittee. Um, and so they, um, essentially constituted a new the affordable housing subcommittee and appointed members. But at that point, we did not have a set of bylaws. Um, we didn't have a charge, we just had members, right? And so, um, we, uh, the affordable housing subcommittee adopted a set of bylaws. And then the question is, who, who approves those bylaws? Do we just approve it on our own, or do they need to be approved by planning commission, or do they need to be approved by the select board, right? And everyone's like, well, it's, you know, your job. Um, so, um, since it was the select board that had constituted us, we sent them to the select board. Jan, we kept you in the loop the whole time and, um, uh, I think the select board, you know, appropriately said, well, why don't we get the planning commission to do it? So it sounds like what the, my understanding is that what the um, select board wants to do is they want, select board wants to approve the charge for the subcommittee, like what is the purpose of the subcommittee? And then the, um, bylaws would be, would be reviewed and, uh, you know, if you want to approve them, it would be approved by the planning commission. So what we did is draft a really, we just took the first paragraph of the bylaws and made that the mission. Uh, and the last page of your packet includes a proposed charge that the select board could adopt that would essentially, um, be the charge to the affordable housing subcommittee and then you all would, um, at a subsequent date, review the bylaws and make sure that you're comfortable.
And just I would, I would hope that the planning commission would, uh, you know, officially agree with the charge. Uh, given the, you know, that, that would be a good handshake to say, yep, we, we are now gonna talk about the bylaws of this group whose charge we agree with, you know, or something like that. But do, do people, what are any other thoughts relative to that breakdown of authority and, uh, and charges and charters and missions and so forth? Mary?
So, so this is just more stepping back these subcommittees we have. We have the solar committee, this committee. Are these like permanent committees? Are these meant to come in and address an issue and, and then another time, there's another committee, or is this just an, uh? So, I just, cause I'm looking at the charge for the solar committee and we'll be talking about that at the next solar sighting meeting. Um, and so, so I'm just wondering kind of what's the idea? Cause if it's, if this is a committee or I guess it's a subcommittee of the, this, do we have subcommittees on like other, like, I'm just trying to understand how we came up with these two and, and how much superstructure do we need, or they kind of, all right, let's put together a plan of trying to address this issue. And then do they stay around forever or not?
Right, so it's a good, that's a good question. I guess my, I'll, I'll give you what I think I've seen. I think that the, the only two that are active now, and, and Stephen, I think, I'm not sure we've cleaned up the website to this effect, but we should make sure, we, we had at one point, uh, you know, a land use subcommittee and a transportation or bikes and pets.
Yeah.
Those are not active. So we have two different animals. One is the affordable housing subcommittee that was set up by the select board to be an advisor, to really be a, I would say, a longstanding topical advocacy group advising the planning commission. So that that isn't an, uh, uh, a chunk of work and then you're done. It's a, it's a topic advocacy role. Um, whereas I would say the solar sighting which has essentially nothing to do with the select board, is an animal of the planning commission with planning commission members only as its members. And that has been given a, a finite task from the planning commission to make recommendations around changes to the town plan relative to solar sighting criteria and process. And so I would say that once that committee does that charge, it would be done.
Okay.
I don't know what other people's thoughts are, that's. Jeff?
Y- yeah, so, uh, I, I think it depends who's on the select board. You know, what, what season we're in. Is it autumn, spring, summer? Whatever. So historically, the select board has chosen its committees. Uh, and then planning commission has had its subcommittees, et cetera. So for instance, the select board appointed the corridor committee to address the reconstruction of Ledger Bridge when our state delegation said we don't want the bridge reconstructed. So fun things like that. We had the band, uh, committee. We've had the bike ped committee. So the select board said, you know, we're done with this committee, like the bike ped. Then the planning commission picked it up and Lucy Gibson continued his chair, uh, on behalf of planning commission. So I completely disagree statutorily that the select board has to appoint subcommittees, but I don't really care. The select board wants to run all this stuff, fine. So sitting here right now, I, I think this is, this is, uh, the current whim of the select board, which I'm fine with. Uh, it, it, and we're answerable to them. And to the extent that the select board says, uh, they wanna add more members to the solar sighting committee, they could do that. Doesn't have to be just planning commission members. Uh, et cetera. I, I, my hope is that long term, somehow we grow out of whatever uh, skin is constraining us and, uh, move into the freedom to have subcommittees to better serve, uh, you know, collectively. So I think it's a temporary thing relative to the affordable housing subcommittee. I, I think we just move this puppy forward, kick it to the select board. It's their subcommittee. Fine, what Jeff's done, I think makes sense. Let's get going.
Okay, Vince?
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with Jeff. I think everything for the charge looks good. But I just wanted to kind of, I, I know we went through this a couple of months ago. But so currently, the affordable housing subcommittee is a subcommittee of the select board but can advise to us, but they are not an advisory committee because the solar sighting committee is an advisory committee. Is that correct?
The just, well, I think I would call them both advisory committees to the planning commission. One is a, a completely contained group of the planning commission. The members are members of the planning commission. That was appointed, the charter, charge, whatever it is of the solar sighting subcommittee is only gonna come to the planning commission to be talked about. Uh, and so it's, it's a working group that we created to help do our job.
Okay.
The select board and there's history involved and so forth, but the affordable housing subcommittee's been around a long time. That has select board involvement and there are multiple members who are not members of the planning commission. So it's not a wholly contained subsidiary of the planning commission. That, that's the distinction. They're both advisory bodies. You know, coming to help us do our job. One of them's self-contained and one of them's broader, but still advising.
But now everyone on the affordable housing subcommittee was appointed by the select board.
Correct, but they are not all planning commission members. Correct, but they are not all Planning Commission members.
Got it, okay.
So, so Jan, when I read this, you know, I, I just wanted, on, on language-wise, the Subcommittee's an advisory bar, body that's going to assist us in implementing strategies. I mean, we don't implement strategies. We are, so what, so I just wonder whether that's accurate or whether what it is, is they assist the Norwich Planning Commission. This is what I've experienced, Jeff, is it, it's, you've, you assist us in ensuring that the goals specified in the town plan are reflected in the appropriate town documents. Right? Like that's, like that, that is what you're doing in terms of the work that we've done together to, so, so that would be one, because I, I'd like to read the first one, your job is to work vigorously. I, I kind of like not, I'm not a kind of a, I, I, you can, if you took that, you said your, the mission is to facilitate the creation and maintenance of affordable housing in Norwich. That gets at it without work vigorously. But that's your choice. I, I, I tend not to have that kind of extra language in my writing. But, but I guess I do wonder whether it is to assist us in implementing, because the Planning Commission doesn't implement. We ensure that our document that are, that the town plan and the zoning and the, all these other documents are aligned and with the goal towards that stated goal. So I just wonder whether this is.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's all, it's all three. I, it's a very good point, I think, because and it's not just that the, the goals of the town plan then roll out to the, the other two documents. It's to help us do the town plan so that it says what it needs to say, and then they roll out. But it's true that if, if the affordable, let, let me ask a question the other way. If the Affordable Housing Subcommittee was going to be active in a specific project, I mean, even the, even the grant application about by the dump, doing, doing a project by the dump, that's more in the implementation category.
I, I think it's advocate. I think the word is advocate, folks.
Yeah. What do you mean? That advocate, how?
What was the advocate? The, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and the Planning Commission, as Mary points out, we're not going to implement anything.
Right.
We, so our Subcommittee role is to advocate.
And, and get all the documents to, to help, to have the framework. Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, look, I, I'm happy to change the word implement, but, but just to give you some examples, just to make this concrete, right? So there is a housing strategy that the Subcommittee helped develop that is an appendix to the town plan. So it's incorporated into the town plan and it has items like review town-owned land to determine whether there's any land that's suitable for affordable housing development. And so the Affordable Housing Subcommittee spearheaded the review of town-owned land in partnership with staff to implement that strategy. I don't know what else to call it. That was not advocacy. It was not policy development. It was the implementation of a strategy. The project that we identified, we identified a piece of land and we developed a grant proposal to try to do the site assessment, the environmental, the site assessment that was needed to move that project forward. So again, that's, I don't know what else to describe that as other than implementation, right? I mean, so we are, we are a body that helps. Not only do we help, I think what we try to do is give guidance to the Planning Commission on, on town policy that's related to affordable housing, but we also are a body that can actually move things forward.
So, so this is, so this works in the sense that we just need an "and" somewhere. Because you, you have a bigger role, in a sense, the Select Board has created this group. And it does do what Mary described, help advise the Planning Commission on our job. Our job is not to implement the things that you just described, looking at town lands or, or running after a specific proposal, but it's perfectly legitimate that that's the Subcommittee's
Right.
role. So you just put an "and" somewhere that says, you know, that, that advocating and getting these documents all aligned and as appropriate, implementing specific things to promote affordable housing.
Yeah, I think just grammatically, it's got to be written so that it's a Subcommittee does that, not that you're assisting the Plan, the Planning Commission in implementing.
Makes sense. There, yeah. The "and" should get it so that the more inclusive, the more expansive role is done for the Select Board, and then there's almost a subset of it that's done helping us.
Okay, so we will, we can make that tweak. So basically, the, the point is that we provide advice and guidance to the, to the Planning Commission on policy for the town related to affordable housing. And then we also have role essentially in, in both advocating and implementing
Right.
affordable housing.
Exactly. I think that makes sense.
But if you, if you're, I can make those changes before it goes to Select Board.
Okay. I, I think that's a good idea, because I, I'd like to be clear on our role and the Select Board. They set you up
Yeah.
as expansive as you can be, but in that broader role, it's, it's somewhat separate from us. Yep, okay. Any other comments on that? Great. Any public comment? And people ran into the room to say things to you? Anybody hiding?
No, no.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Really, really good progress.
Congratulations.
Watch, watch the list serve in your packets. We'll move this thing forward. Talk to your friends, talk to your Select Board friends. Talk to anybody who'll listen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there should, yeah, Stephen, can you?
All right, I'm ending the meeting now.
Yeah, we need an overlay district for a dog park. If you could get that in the final draft.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, with 300 new units.
Yeah.
All right, goodbye, everyone.
Yeah.
Stop talking.